This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Meeting for Tuesday, March 22nd. Great day to be a Bruin. To begin with, I'll ask for a motion to change the order of our agenda for tonight. We're going to switch current number two and current number three, and we're just going to flop them. So, motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the new number two is the Brighton Believer Awards. We'll ask Dr. McGowan to present those awards.
The fact that I make it over those scores without tripping is still a Brighton believe right there. I'd like to thank you very much to the board for inviting this kind of recognition tonight. We're really very, very excited about the notion of recognizing our community members and everybody who's able to join us tonight. We're going to start out, first of all, by telling you about how the fact that the Brighton Believes Council, which meets many community members, staff members here in this room monthly, selected 30 nominees to receive a Brighton Believers Award. A tradition started a few years ago to essentially recognize community members for their great contributions that reflect the Brighton beliefs. We didn't forget about these members of our school community who were recognized and chosen last year. Wanted to make sure they were recognized for demonstrating these character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. And again, the award winners are parents, students, teachers, staff members, coaches, and community members. So when I call your name, if you could come on up and receive your award, and the principal from that building will come up with you, and the person who nominated, if they could also join them at the same time, we'd appreciate that, if they are here. So, the first person we're going to recognize, Mila Sorensen, if you could come on up. From Brighton High School, Dr. Hall. He's so choked up by this award. It's just an emotional moment for Dr. Hall. He's going to pull himself together. Thank you, Dr. Hall. Mila Sorensen, now a Brighton High School freshman, was nominated by her classmate Tara Lama. Tara wrote, "I believe there are some people in the world who just glow. Even if you see them for just an instant, it leaves a lasting impression. Mila is one of these people. She touches everything with an indescribable beauty and light. She is filled with endless love." Mila is a member of the Black Student Union and was a member of TCMS Strong. Mila always is trying to increase her awareness about the world and the people in it. She spends lots of time caring for and worrying about others. She raises others up instead of tearing them down. In this world, people like Mila Sorensen are true gems. We could not agree more." So, thank you for that, and congratulations to you. Hold that ahead of you. Of course, it's stuck. Mila, come on up. There you go. Congratulations. Great job. Thank you. And I think we're going to step right over... Oh, is it right here? Jack Hannigan. Come on up, Jack. I'm going to tell you all about Jack Hannigan, even if Jack is not here. So, Jack Hannigan, now a Brighton High School senior, was nominated by classmate Megan Kenna. Megan wrote, "Jack is an amazing student who pushes himself and everyone around him to do their very best at whatever it is they are doing. I promise that he will never fail to put a smile on your face. He participates in Model UN tennis band, jazz ensemble, and much more." We will get Jack his award, and thank him very much for his contribution, too. If you could offer Jack a livestream round of applause. Megan Mendler, come on up, please. And this is the seventh. Thank you. Megan Mendler, now a 12 Corners Middle School 7th grader, was nominated by classmate Ella Munder. Ella wrote, "Megan has shown her kindness, empathy, responsibility, integrity, and respect in so many different ways. First off, Megan always does small acts of kindness. Although small acts of kindness do not have a huge impact, they still can make more people happy, can help people, and can make someone's day. Next, Megan helps everyone. Megan will be there for you when you are struggling and won't judge you for being true to yourself. I cannot prove enough that Megan Mendler is one of the sweetest, kindest, most-giving people I know." Megan, thanks for all you do to demonstrate your Brighton beliefs, and congratulations. Jim Herman. Come on up, Jim, please. Deion, come on up. You can't hide. Come on over. And Deion Rogers. This is a community award. Great to see both of you. Jim Herman, the vice president of the River Flow Soccer Club, was nominated by Deion Rogers. Deion wrote, "Jim is passionate about bridging racial, religious, cultural, and socioeconomic divides through the beautiful game of soccer. As Frederick Douglass wrote, 'It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken adults.' By using soccer as a vehicle for change, Jim has dedicated himself to uplifting our community. Jim has been coaching youth soccer for more than 17 years and was also one of the founders of the Brighton Junior Bruins Youth Football and Cheerleading Club. He is currently an art director and has been running his own design studio for more than 25 years. Please join me in congratulating Jim Herman." I will just add... Oh, go ahead, Dan. You're like poisoning right here. Thanks. Before you sit down, my own family has been impacted by River Flow Soccer. I appreciate it. And Deion, you're selling yourself short, too, because you have a huge amount to do. I know Jim would be handing it to you for the impact you make on our kids, too. So, thanks to both of you for all that you do. Selfless people for the kids in our community, so. Kevin Rollins. Kevin Rollins, the French Road Elementary School Custodian, was nominated by school counselor Ashley Ellis. Ashley wrote that "The 2020-21 school year was an extraordinary year, but noted one thing remained the same: the way Kevin treated all the staff and students with much kindness, respect, and understanding. When you think about Kevin, you think about integrity, how he cares about his job, the building, his staff, and what his role means. Beyond the usual repairs and furniture moving, you can see Kevin helping students repair their glasses, assisting with their lockers, and connecting with students and staff while always smiling. We are so fortunate to have Kevin and his team help keep our building safe, beautiful, and, phrased, fabulous." Boy, I can attest that. Never seen you anxious, flappable, anything but smiling.
Thank you.
All the time. So, thanks, Kevin, for all you do, and do it very, very well.
Thank you.
And finally, Mitch Nellis. Mitch, if you could come on up. Mitch Nellis, a Brighton resident, was nominated by Lori Eishem. Lori wrote, "Mitch demonstrates all of the traits of Brighton beliefs through his work as a teacher, his volunteer work with Color Brighton Green, and by being a good neighbor. Phrased as a lot greener with the many trees Mitch planted on the properties surrounding the school. He is an amazing dad, not only to his own two children, but to all of the children of Edgemore. The games and activities that he creates are very special to all of the kids. They especially look forward to his annual haunted houses, pumpkin smashing, cookouts, smores by the campfire, snow forts, and leaf piles. Mitch is always willing to lend a hand and is integral to our neighborhood being the connected, tight-knit community that it is." Mitch, congratulations, and thank you very much. To Mila, Jack, Megan, Jim, Kevin, and Mitch, thanks for making our neighborhood, our community, our world a better place. We hear a lot in the media and in popular culture, and you don't have to look very far further to be not positive stories about human beings, yet you are brightening the world, and this was entirely about that. And that, to me, makes a much bigger difference than the other things we see about and read about, and it gives me hope for all of our future. So, a big round of applause again to all of you.
On behalf of the school board, to all the Brighton Believer Award winners, this is about the best way to start a school board meeting that I can even think of. So, thank you all for your participation and for being here tonight, and for the work you do in our community, in the schools, and in our community in Brighton. Thanks very much for that. And I will also tell you with a smile on my face, though all of the rest of the business we have to complete tonight is very important, you are also free to leave if you have to do homework and other things like that. So, again, greatly appreciate you being here and kicking us off, as Dr. McGowan pointed, on the right foot. So, thank you for that. New item number three is public participation. I'll take a breath for just a moment.
How many principals are hiding in the back of that line?
Principal Taffin, we have our eye on you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks.
Thanks. Is there anyone here for public participation? If so, please contact Dan Goldman. Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Andrea.
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Also, we'll need approval of the March 8th, 2022 minutes. I was not at this meeting, but I will put forward a motion to approve the minutes as written. We've all had a chance to see them and review them. Are there any changes? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up, we have the presentation of the executive budget proposal for the 2022-2023 school year, and that, we will turn it over to Dr. McGowan.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. What a great way to start the meeting, and hopefully this budget supports those human beings, those kind of people doing those types of things, and just continues to promote more of that. I think it's a great way to provide context to what we're doing here. And I will start out, and I'm sure I'll finish, by saying thank you to all of you for how you provide us guidance and feedback throughout the budget process, but to Lou, who makes this happen, puts this work together, and works with our leadership team, and based on community feedback and your guidance to get us to a great place in terms of a sound financial plan moving forward. This is the executive budget proposal. We can still make changes, et cetera, before you adopt the budget in the coming meetings, prior to, of course, presenting this to the community. But this is the proposal as it stands right now. We're still waiting for the finalization of the state budget, of course, also, which has an impact. Perhaps this year, less so, because it is a very, I'll say, copacetic situation in Albany right now in terms of that negotiation. We don't expect our projections for state aid to change, in other words. Key budget guidelines are important to keep in mind as we start to provide a framework for the budget, and these are adopted back in the fall. We want to make sure that the budget plan we present to the community ensures recurring operating expenses are appropriately funded with sustained revenue sources. This is a significant area of concern for us as we consider our spending plan this year and then going forward, making sure that the revenue expenditure risks related to COVID-19 and potential cliffs going forward are accounted for, right? So, the notion of hiring people in this current context with federal funds, we need to make sure we understand that those funds will run out. So, those positions are either budgeted for in future budgets, or that we are prepared for that risk provision to then cut those positions. We are fulfilling needs with those positions, though. Our anticipated strategy would to fund them going forward, but to accommodate for that when there aren't federal funds available. Provide appropriate resources in effort to support our strategic plan, the Brighton Blueprint, specifically as it relates to our priorities in this district: academic rigor for all students, mental health and wellness, and the systems that we have related diversity, equity, health and safety, and innovation in the development of alternative learning environments as well. Want to make sure that we're considering the economic climate and the changing needs of students. Prioritize our resources, evaluate our opportunities for efficiencies, for optimizing the resources available to us, looking at any potential reduction or consolidation that we can. We'd like to make sure we're planning prudently for long-term investment in our facilities as well, which is included in this proposal and in, hopefully, a proposition that we would offer to the community around capital work, and comply with the property tax cap, understanding its impact long-term on our financial planning as well. We did a thought exchange and went out and asked people in the community what we should be thinking about in terms of priorities for the budget, and our conclusions, based on that feedback, 600 participants, was that the community wants us to maintain programs. That's a priority. Academic excellence continues to be a priority. Building programs and innovating is essential. Cost is an important consideration, and tax impact should be considered. In other words, our community would like to make sure we're making thoughtful investment focused on student impact. So, there was the balance of cost is a concern. I don't want my taxes to go up considerably, but I also would like to make sure that you're continuing to support program and innovation and academic rigor for all students, which is really a reasonable place for people to be in, but presents the challenge for how do you continue to support program and innovation and keep the cost at a place that is comfortable, relatively comfortable for as many people as we possibly can. What we'd like the community to consider, and continue to consider, is the impact of funding. In other words, we're not there yet. So, yes, foundation aid is going up, and that's great, but it's going up to 80% of what's due. So, for anybody thinking about this in terms of their household budget, what would it look like for you going into next year if somebody told you, "You're only going to get 80% of the salary or the revenue coming into your household"? That would likely change some of your decisions and needs to be kept in mind as a parameter. We're still 20% sure. The impact of inflation, right? So, cost increases that people are seeing at the supermarket, the gas pump, especially the gas pump, those are the cost pressures that we face as well organizationally. The cost of labor, the cost of commodities, the cost of utilities, all going up. We feel the same pinch that people do at home, which I'll jump to number five, impact of the tax increase, recognizing that we have an impact on people's household budget as well, and can't simply pass along inflationary increases, but need to keep that in mind. Three, the impact of COVID as we continue to recover from that situation for kids, for families, what that means in terms of what we're offering, and the impact of our decisions today on the next several years. That notion of the federally funded positions, the things we do now, and the impact that they have on future budgets. Very briefly, just to point out to you in terms of the proposal, we would be looking at an increase in spending of $5.5 million, or 6.2% overall. Where does that break down in terms of areas? Salaries and wages up 6.7%, employee benefits 3.7%, BOSI's up 8.6%, supply services 10.8%, debt and transfer down 2 tenths of a percent. Important to point out on the right-hand corner, we are reducing the general fund spending from the earlier presentations by $1.4 million. So, we said, as we've talked about throughout the process, this is an iterative process. We continue to make adjustments based on what we learned through the process in terms of program needs, student needs, et cetera, and have been able to reduce that spending by $1.4 million in particular areas to support the idea that we don't want to cut program, but we would like to also make sure that we're under the tax cap, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. Where are revenues, our financing sources, relative to then what we can spend, right? So, how much revenue is coming in, and how much spending does that allow for, is an important consideration. We expect sales tax to go up 14.4%. That's a difference of $473,000 next year. Investment income, 21%. However, remember that investment income, that sounds great, 21%, that's only up $2,200, $2,215. Rental of real property go down 76%, $217,000. As we transfer the property at Brookside that we have sold, and that sale is completed, we would lose that rental income. Just important to consider. And that process continues to move along. Our charges for services in non-public up 6.2%. Refunds recovery, 17.5%. State and federal aid up 13.9%, so that $3 billion. That allows for a spending increase. Remember, we're talking about a six... Let me make sure I say the right number as I'm presenting. The 6.2% spending increase, state aid would allow for 3.5% of that 6.2. Our local sources then altogether would allow for a 4.4% increase. Use of reserves up 4 tenths of a percent. I'm sorry, not up 4 tenths of a percent. Proportion of spending up 4 tenths of a percent. Appropriated fund balance, half a percent as well. The subtotal then of financing sources, 25% increase or 9 tenths of a percent increase, 0.9%. Property levy, then, we would propose, again, at the cap number of 2.1%. The subtotal then of taxes going up 2.1%. Proportion of spending, that would allow for 1.4. So, in other words, when you add all of those sources, up 4.0, the 0.9% and 1.4%, you're at 6.2% rounded, of course, down in terms of the decimals, the others rounded up. State aid executive budget, the comparison over time, the estimated aid coming in, we would expect next year, the 22-23 year, that we would be up in foundation aid to $13.2 million. Excess cost aid, BOSI's aid, 4.4 million, which is slightly down from last year's amount. Our transportation aid would go up by about $400,000 to $3.2 million, and building aid would go down just slightly from $3.2 to $3 million. Full-day K aid this year is $940,000. We would plan on that going down to zero next year. We had planned for a three-year phase-out, and the legislation was enacted that that would drop sooner than had it been expected. We have advocated with our representatives in Albany for reinstatement of a portion of that aid and are hopeful that that will happen. There is certainly support from Assemblymember Clark and Senator Cooney for that conversation. It's a matter of can it get included in the final budget? So, that certainly is a wait-and-see item.
Do you know how many districts were affected by that? Given that so many have transitioned to full-day K, it's just us and somebody else?
Us and one other district, which is what makes it problematic to have it included in the state's budget, because it's not... People are not moved by our plight.
It's not a pressing issue for most... Okay.
It's not a pressing issue, yes. It is for Jeremy and Sarah, who have done a really great job advocating for that, and it was included in at least the Assembly's one house, and we're hopeful also in the Senate's one house. So, it will all depend on how that final negotiation turns out.
Thanks.
You bet. So, the real property tax levy is $400,000 less than budget due to the appropriation of year-end funds, important to point out. But the tax cap calculation here, the mathematical calculation provided by the state, lands us at 2.12% cap number, the growth over year-to-year in what can be levied. And that would allow, again, for a 1.37% increase in spending. Rounded up on the previous slide, it showed 1.4%. The spending pressure, though, is important to consider, too. So, on the other side of the ledger, what is it that we need to contend with in terms of pressures? So, the revenue on the top is pointed out, $2.8 million tax levy, $1.2 million. So, the initial budget gap of $1.8 million exists because the expenditures include a minimum wage adjustment of $980,000, contractual salary increases budgeted right now at just over $1 million, new positions of $528,000, health insurance increase $615,000, BOSI's placements $775,000, that's based on student need, and contract transportation, $1.1 million. Completely out of our control, contract transportation. So, that cost is based on the significant increase, the inflationary increase. The way that contract works, inflation then impacts your increase going into the next year. And as we know from either wage or fuel increases, that makes sense, but that's certainly a much larger increase than we would have ever anticipated. It is also due to the increased number of students needing contract transportation for particular placements, so that BOSI's placements number and the transportation number are also related. $2 million, nearly $2 million right there in additional expenses going into next year that are based on student need that we would not have been able to anticipate, that we would not have known about. So, pretty significant change. When you think about that increase in foundation aid of $3 million, $2 million right off the top gone to things that could not be planned for over time. So, a big challenge for us in this year's budget. The second cyber expense as well, looking at our data security and making sure that we're all protected in the district, is an investment. And I say an investment, important to point that out, because it has to happen, of $350,000 spent in that area. Some of the factors impacting spending, just to provide a little more detail, additional needs of students drive in the need for more teacher assistance throughout the district is one area. Excuse me, increased demand for special education services. We've had to add two additional teachers for 22-23. Again, student need-driven. Instructional technology, which we need to continue to build. We are adding two full-time teachers for technology integration to work with our staff to more effectively, all the time, integrate technology into their approach. Addition of a data application specialist as well, important to maintain our data security, fidelity to our data processes, and the quality of our data. It's an overwhelming task right now over time. We're far less staffed than you would be in the private sector in the data and data compliance areas as well. We feel good about what we're doing going forward, but it's important to point out that that's an increased need that every organization is seeing. Our labor increases, contractual and recruitment retention pressures, in other words, to have staff to work with our kids, to actually want to come here, we need to be able to pay people to do that. And there is, with a labor shortage, a real challenge in that. So, that's a $15 minimum district wage, maintaining the operations in the district and continuity of program. Pension contributions will increase, looking at a 1% increase on total salaries of $40 million. And then the health insurance rates, estimated increase 8.5%. The demand for specialized transportation that I mentioned, five out-of-district placements, five out-of-district runs, I'm sorry, being added, increase in the number of BOSI-centered, BOSI's placements as well. I'm sorry, BOSI's centered-based placements. And our capacity relative to cybersecurity risks. Cybersecurity, data protection contracts, upgrades, improvement to system controls, for example, in our email. Again, that trending inflation rate of over 7% impacts utilities, paper, fuel, material supplies, and the tax levy growth factor set only at 2% creates a significant challenge also. Elementary class size is important to look at. This is an area within the budget. We continue to support low class size, and it's an area that we'd have to make adjustment along the way if we need to. Right now, the ratios going forward would be to have 12 sections at kindergarten based on enrollment, at 18.1 students. 12 sections at first grade, up one section from last year, also 18.9 students on average. Second grade, 11 sections maintaining, would put us at 18.9. Third grade, 10 sections maintaining, 21.8. Fourth grade, 11 sections would put us at 20 students. That's also maintaining. And fifth grade is 11 sections, would put us at 21 students. So, we're able to maintain low class sizes, even if we had to make adjustments from there. And you can see in the far-right-hand column, one less teacher at each of those grade levels would yield class sizes that are relatively reasonable. Some of them get a little bit higher as kids get older, but we'd be looking at those if need be, and in the future, continue to monitor that. Small class size has been a priority in this community as well. Really important to point out, we think to people that things that are happening here that are worthy of investment. So, the points of pride in our district that communicate to our community, and this is what we're doing with your resources. Our awards and honors, I think, are something we'd like to make sure that we don't talk often about, but that we're pointing out. Niche.com ranked our district as number one in both Rochester area and upstate New York in its 2022 rankings, number one. Our high school is the number-one high school in the Rochester area, and 12 Corners Middle School is the number-two middle school. I also ranked the district number one for best places to teach in the Rochester area, and number one for best teachers in Rochester area. We don't hang our hat on one ranking over another, because you can find a variety of results from a variety of rankings, other than to say, these are very competitive schools with very competitive performance that we're very, very proud of, the work that's happening, and that kids are getting a great experience each and every day. Our awards and honors also, points of pride, the high school named a National Blue Ribbon School in 2018, and a reward school for increased student achievement, and closing gaps, which I'll talk to you about graduation rate in one moment, in 2017. The gaps between different groups of children, recognizing that all of our kids are achieving a high level, is something we will continue to talk about. The high school named one of Newsweek's Top 500 STEM High Schools in its nationwide 2020 ranking. The high school is ranked number one in the Rochester area, number 10 in New York, number 117 in the country for excellence in science, technology, engineering, and math. There are some 8,000 high schools, I believe, in the believe, in the country, so number 117. 12 Corners Middle School re-designated as an essential element school to watch for 2021. Sixth time the middle school was selected. Council Rock became the first primary school in the United States to receive an international Habits of Mind of Excellence Award in 2019. Really impressive performance, uh, throughout the district. Advanced placement courses as well. Just want to, uh, we lost a table in translation, but point is, advanced placement courses says the same thing. 2020, '21, 79% of graduating seniors took one or more AP courses. 79%. Let me just hover on that number for a second. 2021, 79% of graduating seniors took one or more AP courses. That's really unbelievable. 960 AP exams were taken by 463 students in 2021. 83% of students scored a three or higher on the exam, and 187 students were named AP scholars. We will provide additional information, but it is very important to point out that the largest growth in the number of students taking AP courses are in our underrepresented student population. Dramatic growth in the number of students taking AP courses, and we know there's a direct correlation between success later on in college and career, based on the rigor of the coursework you take at the high school level. And so, getting every student involved in rigorous coursework that has been a priority for us is happening, that, that, those efforts are bearing fruit, and, and it's, uh, impressive, uh, certainly on the impact it's making. 97% of the class of 2021 graduated. 97%. That was 89%, um, I'm sorry, it was 86% in 2013. 89% of the class of '21 continued their education beyond high school. And again, 2021 graduation rate, 97%, 86% in 2013. So, very significant growth. Most impressive though beyond that is the gap closing that's been done. So, Hispanic students in 2013, 72% graduated, now 93%. African-American students, 54%, now 92%. Economically disadvantaged students from 72% to 95%. I would, uh, think that you'd be hard pressed to find another school that's closed gaps so significantly, or has such, uh, highly equalized rates of graduation between groups of students. All students, 100% of students in all groups should be graduating, and that's what we're committed to. The fact that that gap has been closed is something we're very proud of, but the job hasn't stopped, and that will continue as we focus on each and every child having the same level of success and that being exceptional. Um, there's the, there's the AP chart that I, I thought was somewhere else, which is entirely my fault, but I'll point that out right now. Diversity, equity, and social-emotional learning. It's like, where did that great chart go? Full implementation of social-emotional learning, our curriculum at Council Rock with council support as well. Second steps, learning for justice lessons, counselors at French Road, council support at French Road. We've hosted and continued facilitation with Teacher College, Teacher Pipeline Program with St. John Fisher College, and we're, we continue to collaborate with the Shinsheen, the students across multiple curricular areas as well. So, this is not a conversation for us that is standalone. It literally is a part of everything that we're doing in this district and something we're very proud of. And again, to point out, 79% of graduating seniors, 75% African-American seniors with one or more AP, up from 48% in 1920 now to 75%. White seniors, one or more AP, 77 to 84%. Asian seniors, 83% to 100%. Hispanic seniors, 64% at 58%. Multiracial seniors with one or more AP, 88% overall. So, uh, growth in all areas other than the Hispanic seniors. We will continue to focus, of course, on all groups and all students having access and being provided with that great opportunity that we think is very impactful. Visual performing arts, 12 consecutive year, 2021. Brighton designated as best community for music education. Our kids continue to get recognized county, state, and national level for their accomplishments. 1,600 students participate in our curricular programs, visual performing arts, which includes multiple grade levels of choir, band, orchestra, jazz, ensembles, chamber groups, instrumental lessons. 1,600 kids. District had 126 students participate in solo festivals this fall. Four were selected for all county honors, six were selected to participate in the New York State, uh, BDA honor ensemble. There will be 400 student opportunities for cast crew or pit band in the performances of Blood Relations, Beauty and the Beast, all together now in Chicago. Over the course of the year, 400 students participating in performances. 650 high school students enrolled in visual arts electives. 800, uh, high school and middle school visual arts students have participated in local and regional art exhibitions and contests. 800 kids in these activities. Summer arts program returned with 120 students last year and put on two musicals as well. In terms of athletics, 1,500 kids, um, in roster spots, 72 athletic teams across the district. Girls tennis team won sexual regional championships. Girls Nordic skiing team won sexual and, and a state championship as well. All of our varsity sports in the fall and winter have been named scholar athlete teams by Nice. So, all of our teams, varsity teams, fall and winter named scholar athlete teams. So, really doing it both in the classroom and on the court and on the field. 85 clubs and a variety of academic competitions at the elementary, middle, and high schools. 21, the, I'm sorry, the 2021 Crossroads Yearbook, Galaxy Magazine, and Trapzoid earned top honors in New York State from Empire State, Scholastic Press Association. Model UN had 11 students win awards for outstanding or best delegate at the UNAR conference in 2022. And the DECA club had four teams win trophies at regional competition, December 2021. Okay, so we don't brag a lot, uh, often, but that's a lot. I really think it's important though to continue to say to people, but this is what's happening for the investment that you're making, and it's happening for so many kids in so many different types of activities. We're not one school or another. We're all things to all kids all of the time, each and every day. I'm very, very proud of that. So, thank you for your support of all those things, and despite many, many years of budget challenges, that's still happening. That's because you've prioritized it, and our community has supported it and prioritized it as well. So, thank you for that. Capital project planning, and this was a big part of those budget conversations and how we would do that over time. Remember, we had to get the car payment in. We're at that point now. If you take a look at the desired state that we'd like to see in terms of that debt service over time and how that matches revenues, we now will have an opportunity for investment in facilities with no new tax impact. So, in other words, no increase then in the tax impact for debt service if we're able to maintain this over time, but we'll have the opportunity to put together another project going forward, about a $20 million project in a future year. That's not this year's proposal. So, by using a combination of our capital reserve and funding, financing over time, we're going to be able to do some really great work and continue the progress that has been made. Our proposition for this year would be, uh, to spend $7.2 million. I'll go through the projects on the right, but how does that break down? Eight point, I'm sorry, $4.8 million would be financed, and $2.4 million would come out of the capital reserve. Our current capital reserve, so money that you've put aside over time, that is coming from our community, from surplus at the end of the year, and building aid that's received on, on projects, stands at $6.5 million. So, in other words, right now, set aside is $6.5 million in the capital reserve. We would propose using $2.4 million of that to go towards a $7.2 million project, which means no additional local share then for our community. So, no increase in taxes to pay for this. It is your money. It's coming out of both aid, but also the reserves that you've put aside. And the estimated state building aid is $4.8 million. That offsets the impact on local property taxes. So, that's how that all comes together. The financing, matching that to the revenues then, the aid that comes in after the project begins, with what you are financing out of your savings account to cover that local share. The scope of the project, we'd replace the gym floor at French Road, new cooling tower at French Road, playground at French Road Playgrounds, which also need to be replaced in terms of accessibility for students, and it's time to repair, replace them as well. Site lighting to make it a more safe environment, the middle school boiler replacement, domestic hot water boiler replacement, and HVAC controls. And at the high school, replacing the gym floor and bleachers, renovation rehabilitation of the main gym as well, maintaining the architectural integrity, the look of a traditional gym, but upgrading as well, and the roof replacement. We have to do the odd lower roof. These are things that have to be done to maintain our facilities. They're not some like grandiose fancy project that we're, uh, wishing for. These are the things that ought to be done to continue to upgrade, repair, and maintain the facilities. Uh, but we're very grateful to be able to do that without an additional tax increase, uh, to make that happen. In terms of the impact on tax rates, the equalization rate, just would like to point out, um, next year, what will happen and what is due. And we've explained before, the tax equalization rate between towns and the reason for that. Um, in other words, the state looks at the levy increase in every town and how close the assessed values in a particular location are to what they would consider the values. In other words, the local assessor makes a judgment, and the state compares that, and then has to have a rate to equalize that between towns, because there are different assessors in every town, different property values in every town, and they want that to be equalized. The equalization rate in the current year in Brighton is 95%. In other words, the state estimates that the assessments in Brighton are 95% accurate, so to speak. Not to say our assessor is inaccurate in any degree, but in the judgment of the state, it's equalized by saying it's 95%. And in Pittsburgh, that's 91%. So, that equals all the way on the right-hand side, a rate of 26.54 per thousand in Brighton, and in Pittsburgh, 27.72. You can see the difference between that of a dollar, uh, is it a dollar 18, is because the assessment is 91% in Pittsburgh and 95% in Brighton. Next year, if there was no increase in the levy or growth in the tax base, and you are not presented that, that information until August, when the assessment rolls are provided and when you set the actual rate, the estimated right now equalization rate would be 89% in 82, in Brighton, 82% in Pittsburgh. Think about it this way. As everybody is seeing real estate and the market be very hot and the values go up, the state sees that too, and says, okay, the values right now as assessed, because everybody's assessment is not changing instantly, and doesn't get changed, by the way, until after those sales are made, and then perhaps based on the sale price, the assessment might go up. Point is, 89% right now is the judgment of the state and the equalization rate, 82% in Pittsburgh. That would mean, again, if values don't go up, if we're not given an assessment rule that goes up, a 26.52 rate per thousand in Brighton and 28.81 are up 3.9% in Pittsburgh. The impact on the tax bill, it's caused by the redistribution of the tax levy resulting in that change in equalization rate. Assuming a home value at $250,000 is plus $271 in Pittsburgh and less $4 in Brighton. Lou, any clarification on that? I passed the test with Lou. Thank you for that assessment. I got a thumbs up. Uh, it's a complicated formula that Lou does a really great job of working through and figuring out as well. Um, the impact on tax rates, equalization levy increase then, how does that impact? Uh, and look at then what our levy increase. So, remember, the previous slide was with no increase. Next year going forward, remember, 89%, 82%. The tax rate per $1,000 of assessed value then would be, with our proposed, uh, tax increase in this executive budget proposal, $27.09 per thousand in Brighton, 29.42 in Pittsburgh, up $137 then on a home valued at $250,000 in Brighton, based on this proposal, and up $423 in Pittsburgh. And remember, that is due, that change, that disparity is due to the equalization rate, and we have homes that are both in Pittsburgh and in Brighton. Summary, total spending proposal of $93.1 million, up $5.5 million or 6.2%. The estimated tax levy, up $57.9 million or 1.2 million. Uh, additional increase, the tax levy would be 57.9, up 1.2, or percentage increase of 2.12%, uh, which would not exceed the property tax gap. Plans for reduction of federal funds over the next two years, we've accommodated for that reduction in this budget proposal as well, reflecting our continued investment in the blueprint priorities. Again, academic rigor for all students, mental health and wellness, and those systems related diversity, equity, health, safety, innovation, and development of alternative learning environments as well. We believe we're responding to mandated increases in spending for program, for transportation, all the mandated increases that we have, and continued investment in program while minimizing the impact on local property tax caps. If you go back to the community's priorities, we believe that this budget maintains and increases the performance of programs and supports our kids in the ways that they need it to, while being respectful of this desire to, uh, limit as much as possible the increase in taxes to our community members. And essentially, at the end of the day, reflects what we value here in this community, that fine balance and support for children and families. Our next steps will continue to be to, uh, assess the impact of the final state budget. We expect by April 1st, uh, that should happen. It is supposed to be in place by state agreement at the end of March. April 12th, the budget forum and, uh, budget adoption. So, we would ask you on that night to adopt the budget, and, uh, we provide, again, the community an opportunity as we always do, uh, for participation in that conversation or feedback. And the budget hearing that happens on May 10th, and the budget vote, of course, right here in this building on the 17th from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. No word yet on food, uh, food from Kiwanis, I think often of Gretchen Schaefer. A safe bet that there won't be a spaghetti dinner, uh, but perhaps food trucks or something like that. So, uh, we'll let you know when we know more about that. Any questions on the executive budget proposal as it stands right now?
Just from my standpoint, no questions. Of course, an initial comment. I think what's really important is you went across 20 to 25 slides there. We had multiple pages of accomplishments in each of the schools for things that are happening. And we have this dance every year of trying to make sure we accommodate what our students need, what our staff and what our facilities need, and what our community is able to bear. And I think that, uh, the team and, um, you know, shout out to everybody, obviously the principals as leaders, Lou for the work on the background, um, obviously yourself, but all those that contributed to this. Um, I just think this upcoming budget, like all, will be challenging, but this is a great, at least initial look. We know some things could change between now and then. A great initial look that does really focus on students first. So, appreciate all the efforts that went into it, and all the accomplishments, all the previous budgets are helping you and your team drive. So, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. Much appreciated. And again, thanks to Lou for his leadership in the area as well. Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have, um, approval of resolution of a SEACR agreement. SEACR is an acronym for State Environmental Quality Review Act. And what it basically says, associated with Prop 1, that you heard Kevin, um, discuss on slide 19, Dr. McGowan discussed on slide 19, um, was the, uh, capital work that's being proposed for 2022 and 2023. It's what's called type 2 work, which means it doesn't have an environmental impact because it's basically, and I'm paraphrasing here, within the existing footprints. We're not adding new buildings or new things. So, this resolution allows us to proceed forward without having to actually undertake a SEACR review. I'll quickly look at Lou to make sure I got that correct.
No, that determination is informed by our legal counsel and also our architect. So, the board's acting on that based on advice from those two agents.
Right. So, thank you for that clarification. So, motion to approve the resolution for the SEACR agreement.
So, moved?
Moved by Andrea?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Resolution is passed. Next up, um, Tuesday, May 17th, as, uh, Dr. McGowan pointed out, approval of a resolution authorizing the annual budget vote, the election, and the associated propositions. Uh, motion to approve, I'm sorry.
So, moved?
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor? Aye. Um, motion is passed. Uh, number nine on the agenda, uh, could you pronounce the last name for me, please?
Shiro.
Shiro, thank you very much. Approval to appoint Jeffrey Shiro Esquire as an independent hearing officer for a 504 due process hearing. Motion to approve.
So, moved.
Moved by Julene?
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. Um, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion is passed. Uh, item 10, approval of a second reading of the policies which were first reviewed at the March 8th, Board of Education meeting. Policy 6160 Personnel, Professional Growth and Staff Development. Policy 8220 Instruction, Career and Technical Occupational Education, and Policy 1510 Bylaws, Regular Board Meetings and Rules, Quorum and Parliamentary Procedure. Any questions on the second read of those policies? Motion to approve the policies, all three at once, as written.
So, moved.
Moved by Christina?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion passed. For the consent agenda, first we have, uh, fundraising activities.
I found this on the web.
Okay. Oh, you talked to my watch.
Okay, I didn't mean to talk to your watch.
That's weird. I thought it came out of your pocket.
It did?
That's weird.
I'm on mute. Um, all right, let's recollect. All right.
Siri is apparently meeting your family.
As, is our custom, we will read each of the gifts as, uh, part of the consent agenda. First, a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $568 to Adele Machavishis for books for a companion event to the in-person author visit of Jourdain Nolan to Council Rock. Second, a gift from Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $2,418 to Dr. George Smith for an ultraviolet visible for an ultraviolet visible light spectrophotometer to be used in AP Bio, AP Chemistry, and AP Environmental Science classes. And finally, C, a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $100 to the TCMS Orchestra made in honor of teacher Jenny Mull and will be used to purchase two pieces of music for the middle school. As always, we are grateful for the many gifts we do receive from the Brighton Education Fund and how it always benefits our students. Motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Julene. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Before we adjourn, anything else you would like to add to my Dr. McGowan?
No, I think I've spoken quite enough.
It's Suri.
It's Suri. Wait, I'll test her. Thank you.
Anything else from other board members? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Julene.
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.